All right, we're going to start the March 11 briefing session. And do we start with roll call? Is that right?
Council President Protem Sabone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that councilmembers Wilkerson and Klitsky just entered the room. So Council President Wilkerson is the only one absent.
And Council President Wilkerson is out of town representing us today at the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC. So we're all stuck with me for briefing and legislative tonight. We're going to start with our boards and commissions interviews. So we have two. We'll start with the library board for Mari Mar Gill. Hopefully I said that right. If you could just come down and introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about your background experience and why you're interested in this position.
I'm Mari Mar Gill. I live in West Central Neighborhood. And I'm a very enthusiastic and energetic user of the library. I love libraries, love books, always have. And when this opportunity came up to join the board, I thought it was a really nice opportunity for me to be able to do some community engagement and help an institution that I really revere. And so I'm happy to be here. Had a nice chat with the mayor earlier, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
She's my neighbor. You don't want any questions.
Well, to give you one, I'll channel back to former councilmember Stratton. And if you're from here, what high school did you go to?
I'm not. I'm from Massachusetts originally.
Massachusetts. Do you have a favorite high school now?
I'm going to have to go with my alma mater, Natick High School.
Councilmember Bingle.
Are you a Patriots fan?
Sadly, yeah. Why are you a Patriots fan?
True blood so, okay?
All right. Well, thank you for coming down and sharing with us. We will be taking action tonight, but we don't expect you to have to come down for that tonight. We'll let you know afterwards.
Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next one we have is Matt Jensen for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Same thing, if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon. Matt Jensen, I've been in the hospitality industry for a long time. I used to have hair, actually, when I first started. So it's been about 34 years. I've been in Spokane in the hospitality industry for about 22 years. 20 of that was at the Davenport, and the last year I've been at the Doubletree here in Spokane. So I've been involved with the Lodging Tax Assessment Group just over the 20-year period. I'm very aware of it, and I'm excited to be involved in the committee here to be part of that group that decides kind of what those funds are used for and for what events, and hopefully able to grow on bringing more events to Spokane, so.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions?
No.
Same one about high school.
Central Valley High School, Spokane native, yeah. Grew up out in Freeman, but finished at CV, so.
Right, well, thank you very much for coming down and being here.
Thank you.
Again, we'll let you know after vote tonight, but you don't need to come down tonight. All right, so we'll go to today's. We have no adjustments to the agenda today.
Nope, didn't see any adjustments.
We can just move right on to briefing for the March 18 agenda.
All right, sounds good. Well, good afternoon, and going into the consent items for the advanced agenda for March 18th. Item one, this item will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
This is the purchase of another used Dodge Charger from Douglas County, Washington, for the police department. This one's a 2019, it's got 55,000 miles on it. We do have some of our 22 vehicle order coming in. They're starting to trickle in, which is good news. We're still behind. The bottom line on this is it's a lot of vehicle for $9,000, and so I recommend that we pick it up. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Item number two, this one is going to be briefed by Major Singley.
So this item is purchase of 128 Samsung cell phones. We last purchased phones in 2020, they're at the end of their usable life. The cost is $81,619.20, and service will be through T-Mobile.
Any questions?
All right, thank you, Major. Thank you.
Item number three, this is going to be briefed by Chris Abert.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. This is the last extension with CNC Yard Care for We Control Lawn Maintenance Services at the Nelson Complex and Waste Energy Facility. The cost for this extension is $50,624.53 plus tax. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Item number four, for a low bid, this will be briefed by Dan Bowler.
Item four pertains to Traffic Calming Cycle 10 Project, for which we just opened bids this afternoon. The apparent low bidder is Inland Infrastructure of Spokane, net $2.97 million, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. We're checking the bids to verify they meet all the requirements. Four other bids were received, rather, three other bids for a four total. The low bid was $16,000 or less than 1% over the engineer's estimate. Work will begin late this spring and last through the summer.
I have a quick question about Cycle 11. Is that also out of bid right now, too?
Yeah, no. Cycle, two things on Cycle 11. The meeting for Illinois will take place on 3/21, March 21, where we'll dial in the speed control there on Illinois. And then we just added some, a couple of things on standard. So that will traffic calm, that Cycle 11 will be out for bid in early May, but with also plenty of time for construction in 2024.
All right, thank you very much. I know the neighborhoods will be very excited to see those projects.
All right, thank you, Dan. Item number five, this is going to be briefed by Justin Lundgren. I do not see, Major Singley will do this one, too? Thank you.
Okay, this, this item is an agreement between the Guild and the City of Spokane that resolves two outstanding grievances related to exceeding annual vacation accruals. It's nonprecedent setting, the total cost is $5,427.07.
Thank you, Major. Why, why are we approving this one if it's only 5,000? That's my only question with this one. Because it's under the 50,000 threshold, so.
I cannot answer that.
Oh, here we go. Mr. Piccolo's company.
Okay.
Maybe there's some statutory.
Yeah.
Most likely because it's part of the collective bargaining agreements. We have a, if we have a supplemental agreement or an addendum, that's a part of the CBA. Because the council approved the CBA, we tend to bring those back to you.
Okay.
We try to resolve some of these matters without bringing them out of the council, but sometimes it crosses over where we feel more comfortable bringing it back to the council.
Sure. And to whom is the money being paid? Is it to the Guild?
For the specifics of it, Chief Lundgren said he would be happy to come down and brief council in executive session to kind of, if you wanted more details on it.
I do not, I do not have more details at this point.
Well, I'll talk to the chief offline. I just try to understand that, so.
And Matt Boston, so we were in a meeting, too, as far as some payroll clarifications that we needed to make as well, so Matt can speak to that.
Everybody in the city.
That's right. Calm down.
This is for Detective Kennedy, that was retired detective that had accrued 103 vacation hours, just didn't get paid out, and that's, that's the only person that this is responsible for. Essentially, the reason that this came to you is because it's an MOU that's, that has been made between the Guild and the city.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number six, this will be briefed by Michael Diamond, and he is online.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, and thank you for taking me online at this time. I was unable to be there in person. This request is for a new personal services agreement for electronic monitoring systems. This would move the city under a state omnia contract with BI Inc. and would provide a lower cost of operations, as well as a better opportunity for victim notification, as well as some new utilized technologies for BI. The total cost expenditure would be no more than $275,000 per year.
All right, not seeing any questions. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Number seven, this item will be briefed by Don Kinder.
This is the same as earlier today, right?
I believe so, yes. So if there's not any additional questions.
Yeah, the, the total should change, right?
Yes, we'll need to amend the total if we use on the monthly run with the reduced beds. So we'll have to reduce the budget amount to match the 60 bed shift.
I was just wondering, when, when will an SBO be coming for this? Or is there not one?
There's, I don't believe there is one. It's coming from the existing allocation of resources for sheltering that are already within the budget.
So because it's from that bucket, okay.
Correct. Yeah.
Do you know what that total is for the six months?
It's 55,000, no, it's 56,500 a month.
Okay.
So we'll be, it'll be up to those six months if we use them all.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Cool. Thank you, Don. Now moving into the legislative agenda, we have Resolution 2024-0028 regarding traffic calming.
And for that one, we were actually going to look for a deferral for a week for that one, just to give the projects one more week with the funding stuff and finalizing that.
Also move a deferral of one week.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of a deferral? Aye. Any opposed? All right, they'll be deferred for one week.
All right, thank you. And then ordinance C3, 3, oof, sorry, C36501, and this will be briefed by Matt Boston.
This is just removing the grants component from the purchasing job department. This is just an oversight from SMC that we had uncovered when we were doing SMC review. Remember, there used to be a position, a department that handled both grants and purchasing. Grants is now under accounting, purchasing is on its own.
Thank you, Matt. And then our last ordinance is ordinance C36502, being briefed by Relene Janet.
Good afternoon, council. This is an amendment to the SMC 13.03A regarding requirements for the city's industrial pretreatment program. Proposed changes are, addresses the typos in the text. There are two noteworthy. One is the definitions of significant non-compliance in the 1303A.0801, containing an error in the timeframe for reporting. The timeframe is being edited to mirror the language in the 40CFR Part 403, which is the general pretreatment regulations. And the second one is SMC 13.03A.1201, it's being updated to read applicable pretreatment standards rather than category pretreatment standards. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the advanced agenda for March 18th.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes. We do have executive session, but we also had our report, so I was wondering if you guys want to do that before or after executive session?
Do it now.
Do it while we're sitting here?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go through those Housing Action Subcommittee. I think we just got a good report on that. Neighborhood Council Work Group, don't believe that's met, but we did talk about reviving that after the Community Assembly Meeting. CHHS Board.
That would be me. Actually, I was kind of out of that one, so, I was sick, so, yeah, couldn't really do much of an update. I did talk a little bit about legislative session, fentanyl resolution, yeah.
All right, thanks. Sorry. All right, next is Community Assembly. If anyone wants to share that to the public about our meeting with Community Assembly that we had, our joint session. It was already a public meeting, so they can go back and watch it. All right, I thought we had a good conversation overall, and we're reviving the work group, so I think that was positive outcome. Comp Plan Amendment Stocking Committee, we just got that big update now. Human Rights Commission.
So we have, or there are five applications to appoint a new member from the mayor's office, so I'm sending my recommendation, and there will be voting in two weeks.
Great, thank you. Plan Commission and Plan Commission Transportation Subcommittee.
Go in blank, I'm sorry. What did we do?
If it comes to you, we can come back.
The Planning Commission meets Thursday, so I don't think there's, if there was one, it was like a month ago. I'm sorry, I didn't get the memo that we were supposed to report on these. Planning Commission, Transportation Subcommittee.
If it, if it comes to you, you can.
I don't think we took any actions. I think we just had presentations, if I remember, sorry.
Okay. The Public Partnerships, that has not met yet either. We just formalized that last week, so that'll be, sorry. But I can report that our partnership with the youth, or the health, school-based healthcare centers is under construction, and those should be opening up next month. So I'm sure that we'd be interested in going to a ribbon-cutting ceremony of, and seeing it kick off, since we were partner for that. Downtown Spokane Bid Board and Partnership, those two together, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm not on the bid, but I'll talk about the partnership real quick. So this Wednesday is a policy committee meeting, and they'll be finalizing their federal legislative agenda as well as, and I don't know if this is the first time they've done it, but they're going to have a county-city policy priority agenda that they put together, so that's great. And they did have their big annual meeting on February 22nd, very well attended, but that's, that's about it for the DSP.
Bid Board?
Yeah, Bid Board meets every other month, and the last big meeting was their annual awards, and so they were just giving out best-in-bid awards and things like that. But there's continued conversations around a bid expansion, what it would look like. And at our last meeting, we got an update on Puma's recommendations for a potential expansion, what a timeline would look like, what it would cost, what's feasible, what's not feasible, specifically to the South. There's a lot of questions about should we expand to the South. Puma's recommendation was not to expand to the South because financially it doesn't make sense for the bid to expand, but there is potential expansion opportunities to the East on division, to just capture some of the bars right there, potentially north across the, with the North Bank. And so lots of discussions about Bid Board expansion and what it would look like, so. Also discussions on if other bids were to be established, you know, what would that look like and how would they interact with this one, so.
Great. GMA Steering Committee.
We have not had a meeting, I don't think, since the last time we updated, but we do have one coming up next week, I believe. I don't know off the top of my head what's on that agenda, but I know some of the bigger items, the sexier items that people are probably more interested in, will be coming down the pike in August, so we'll have some more updates as we go along.
Launch Northwest, I know I wasn't able to make that meeting, but Councilmember Navarrete or Councilmember Cathcart?
Well, yeah, I did attend. I got there a little bit late, but it was a good meeting overall. They had some breakout sessions, looking at some different, just educational issues and obstacles, and what are some sort of community ideas to overcome. And so I think the one that I sat in on was sort of how do we get increased enrollments in college, in, or, or your post, post-secondary education. What else? There's some conversation around our limits with regards to, time limits with regards to the ARPA funds, and the, the idea that this group is going to have to meet more frequently for the next couple of months to really bolster their plan, to make sure they can get all those dollars under contract or spent by the time that's required. And so that's, that's something that's going to be coming up, just a lot more conversation there. And then overall, it was just a general update on the organization, and I think they had Captain Mydl there talking about some different policing pieces as well to start off the meeting.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Library Board.
That was me, just big celebration of the levy.
Park Board?
I don't have an update from the Park Board. Garrett, do you have anything?
Nope, just me meeting this Thursday.
Yep.
And we'll look forward to the next update. Priorities, Spokane?
That's me, I missed that one.
Regional Homeless Authority, don't think that's convened yet either.
No, I'd love to chat on it, though.
Okay. And Spokane Arts, I think we got plenty of update from them today, too, unless you had anything else to add.
No, first meeting, really excited to be, be there, and got a, got a good team.
All right, so then we will head to executive session for potential litigation and pending litigation for 30 minutes. It's a tough one. It's a tough one.
Spokane City Council is extending their executive session six additional minutes until 4:30 PM. No further action as anticipated when they return. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session four minutes, six minutes until 4:30 PM. City Council is extending their executive session two additional minutes until 4:32 PM. No further action as anticipated when they return. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session by two minutes until 4:32 PM. Council, City Council is once again extending their executive session two additional minutes until 4:34 PM. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session two minutes until 4:34 PM. No further action is anticipated upon their return. City Council is extending their executive session one minute until 4:35 PM. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session one minute until 4:35 PM. No further action is anticipated upon their return. City Council is extending their executive session two additional minutes until 4:37 PM. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session two additional minutes until 4:37 PM. No further action is anticipated upon their return.
All right, we are out of executive session and recessed until 6 o'clock. Thank you.